God almighty.
Councilman Kloschman is going to lead us in the invocation.
How may I be thanked you that we're able to gather here, Lord? Under the flag of freedom, Lord, I pray for our military, Lord. I pray that the government shutdown does not affect their pay, Lord, and I pray the Democrats just give in. I pray for our city, Lord, to protect our first responders, protect our children, Lord. Help us during this meeting to be pleased with you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, bring you one lead us in, bring Appleton lead us in the pledge, please.
I plead allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this meeting to order. Praise and recognition, I want to get started and talk about Scott Tweedy, the Parks and Rec crew, and all the volunteers. They had a highly successful haunted trail in the four nights it was open. I was talking to Scott today, they expect, they think it was somewhere between seventy-five hundred and eight thousand people went through, which is wonderful. They do a fantastic job, so I just wanted to give them kudos and some praise and recognition. Any other praise and recognition?
I want to thank Chief Bass and the SAPD. My son was involved in an accident going football practice there a couple of weeks ago. And by the time I could even get down there, there was about five of them already there. Thankfully, nobody was hurt, but they were all there to take care of. There was other high school kids involved too, but appreciate you guys.
They did a pretty good job.
I'd like to thank all our responders, the first responder event we had over at Luke's on the 10th. We had a great turnout. We had all of our first responders fire the place, the whole nine yards. And we got a lot of good information out there. We, I know two different families that we actually got to help. So it's what it's about. We just helped one person.
Well, you know, the program is a great program, and Charlie, you've continued that, and we appreciate that. I was going to be there, but it was our anniversary and my wife comes before that.
Next year is going to be a big difference. I got, we're going to take a lot of stuff off.
Well, it was her birthday, not her anniversary. Councilman Rucker.
I'm going to piggyback on you. You mentioned the four nights at the haunted trail. I was eating lunch today, and I heard several kids, special needs kids, who were talking about the additional, the sensory night at the haunted trail as well. So that was a huge addition with the On Purpose Project and those folks who gave the kids who typically want to enjoy a scare event, gave them the ability to come out and enjoy it in their own environment. So that was awesome.
Councilman Kloschman.
Yes, sir. You know, I'd like to thank our public, I mean, our zoning committee, look, our zoning committee. It just, there was a lot of people there, and they were pretty, pretty wound up. They thought, they thought that the Nazis were going to come in and steal their camper and sell it to the recycling companies or whatever.
And they sent out, I asked Marshall about when he looked up, the camera was right in his face.
I'll tell you what, when they were talking about the guns, I had a few people calling me about my guns. I was very tempted to give the number to the building department and say, yep, you have to turn in your guns Friday at ten o'clock. Here's your phone number.
Well, you know, I had many messages on Messenger. I said, guys, all you gotta do is go to the city website and read the agenda. All we're doing is just getting our ordinance in line with the state ordinance.
Right, right, right. What was that on Facebook? I'm sure he read some too. I try, I try to stay off there just because.
Big St. Albans, she stirs a lot of stuff. Any other praise and recognition?
Well, real quick, the fire department, I want to recognize them too. They were obviously there too that day, so appreciate you guys as well.
Madam Boyd Lance. Any others? All right, approval minutes from City Council, October 6th, 2025. Questions or discussion or changes? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Old business. Recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the zoning code change. We request to Article 1333.03, accessory structures, fences, pools, and uses in residential districts. Questions or discussion? Well, I'm going to start the discussion. All right. There's a reason that these ordinances are in place. All right, where are we going to draw the line? Is my concern. This is going to create a nightmare for the building department. All right, yeah, we have a clutter ordinance in St. Albans. But where are we going to draw the line? That's my only question. Where are we going to draw the line? Yes, sir.
Not with taking children's play equipment away from their front yard.
Children's play?
This, this, this is talking about the, this is the one talking about the children's play equipment. That's what, that's what item number one is.
Right.
We're talking about swing sets in front yards is what we're talking about with item number one.
And pools.
That are anchored in.
Everything else.
I mean, I think that, again, what this is really focused on, I'm the one who brought this to the table with zoning. What this is really focused on is a resident brought this to myself and other council members because they were having to take their swing set and their trampoline out of their front yard, their, their own private property front yard that is well back from the road, near their house, I've driven by it, well-kept, no grass growing underneath of. What is that?
I said, I got a question when you get finished. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So with that, the, the only violation they have is that the location of where their trampoline and their swing set is. I'm sorry, we have an obesity issue, we have an outdoors, not going outdoors issue, we have a society that is crumbling, and we need to get these kids out in playtime, out in enjoyment. There is nothing wrong. This particular case has an autistic child who enjoys the motion of the swing set. Why are we going to force them to go to their side yard, to their backyard? It's their yard. It's theirs. They own it. They pay the taxes. What harm is there for a child swinging in their front yard? I don't understand this. I don't understand why we are beating this and
My question is.
We had a public forum that at the public forum, the large majority, and there's other folks here, large majorities.
How many people were there?
Forty-two.
Forty-two signed into.
Forty-two out of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-one.
All of us could have been there. Any of us could have been there. This idea of there was only forty-two out of this many, those are the people that came out and represented their voices. Those people show a percentage, yes, it's a small percentage, but every single citizen had the opportunity to come out. They knew about it. Facebook was real loud about it. How many people did not come on Facebook or did not come in person that spoke on Facebook? Just because you want to pick apart that how many people came, again, that's how many people came to speak. There were people standing outside screaming that they couldn't hear the meeting. The clear position is that this city wants to have the ability to do with their property as they have the right to do. And especially when we're talking about item number one with swing sets. And yeah, pools and whatnot are listed, but this is really about swing sets. This is, this is what the, the issue came about because we are going to go around this town and tell anybody with a swing set in their front yard, remove it.
I, I'm going to play devil's advocate a little bit. All right?
The population spoke.
All right, forty-two people.
They all had a chance to speak. You could have been there. I mean, anybody could have been there.
Uh, I'm going to play devil's advocate. When you start putting pools and all this stuff in the front yard, what's it going to do to the property values of your neighbors?
You're not going to have children move in when you, or you're not going to have families move in when you're not allowed.
Buddy, there were so many kids growing up in St. Albans that we didn't have.
Are there now?
In the front, no, because the chemical plants died down and our leaders in our community fought the interstate coming outside the river.
Leaders in the community to think about how to bring youth families into this.
So by putting swing sets and pools in the front yard, it's going to bring people.
By allowing humans in America to do what they wish with their private property, you start telling everybody what they can and can't do with their own private property that's going above and beyond, you're going to have people leaving your.
Where are you going to draw the line though, Dave? We don't allow parking cars and stuff in grass in the front yard.
We're going over the same repetitive, this was a public hearing, the, the public hearing.
Answer my question.
Not here, not with swing sets. That's, that's my answer to your question. Where do we draw the line? When there's a reasonable issue that's presented.
Well, you're talking about private property.
I'm talking about private property, swing sets don't.
So we're going to allow people to park cars and everything else in their grass in their front yard?
That's not what this.
I, I know that.
But point of order then.
Go ahead, Bill.
To me, my, my question is, as I thought, make the swing sets was for people that do not have the side yard or a backyard. And that would be the exception that you would have the swing set in the front yard. Purposely, or the swing set in the front yard is not as safe as the swing set in the backyard if you have a backyard. Because how many people, kids walking around the streets and what have you. But my question is, you have to have back on what you said there. If you put a swing set in there, then all of a sudden, everybody, we're going to look like boot camp, loading camp. It's going to have everything in the front yard, and there's, there's got to be a limit.
That's the one, that's the one concern that I have is you open up Pandora's box. Where do you draw the line at? That, that, that's the only question I have.
My question, real quick, my question is, this includes pools. Is that a safety?
That doesn't include pools. Pools are a thing.
The section. I just saw it in there, so that's why I was asking.
Then why does it say pools?
Because the.
It's in, it's in the ordinance, but it's not, it's not anchored to the ground. It says play equipment.
That's the change.
Outdoor play equipment whenever you.
It says your structures, fences, pools. That is the caption of the article.
Whole article.
That's the article. So you all look that up. That's what, and then there's like A, B, C.
Have some conclusion.
Like a normal.
First off, I, I put up a temporary rule, and again, it's temporary because I don't want my grass to die underneath it. So the most it's up there for is three days at the very most. I'll tell you why I put that in my front yard is what I do is because I want to be able to see my daughter. Okay, today is not a safe world, and I'll tell you, I'll argue that it is safer for me to be able to see my daughter in the front yard than for me to wonder how everything is going in the backyard. To me, I'll argue about safety. I think it's much safer, and yes. And every parent that has a brain is going to keep their swing set and their pool close to their house. That's, that's the way I, I see it.
My biggest point being here is, again, private property and freedom. Your decision and your choice is you feel more comfortable with it in the front yard. Why is there an issue? But again, you're, we're not talking about pools. Like he said, pools and, and they're in different subsections of this park. So what we're talking about, the part that, and that's why I said, this, what we are debating at this point right now is swings. Swings and trampolines, play equipment, anchor play equipment. We're not talking about the things that you are, that you are posing a Pandora's box. And when that gets broad, then we address that at this point. But what was broad is swing sets on Adams Avenue. That, I mean, that's what started this, swing sets and trampolines.
Wait a minute, hold on, Jared. Charlie's got the.
We understand. The only thing we're changing is that the swing sets can be anchored. Everything else stays the same in the ordinance, right?
They're allowed to be in the front yard. They have to be
Ten feet.
Ten, ten feet back and, and three feet from your, the side of the property line.
Fifteen from the front of your property.
Yeah.
Was that all that we changed?
Yes.
I mean, that's all we changed.
Well, that, that's what changes, but what, what, what's, Jared, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, number one, just to explain this, this, if this is approved tonight, it will have to go into ordinance form and adopted just like any other ordinance. So the PNC recommendation is just a recommendation that we can get the specifics of the ordinance later. But, yeah, I support this wholeheartedly. I've had individuals come to me. Yes, different scenario, different example, the councilman Rucker. I cannot bear that situation until, just learned it a second ago. But at the end of the day, this is simple playground, things of that nature, trampoline. I personally have no issue with this. This is, as Councilman Rucker, I believe, said earlier, freedom thing. Me personally, I, I said this the last meeting. I'm not big about, I've tried to be principled as far as my governmental policy beliefs, and I feel that this is a little bit too much of government interfering with people's liberties here. And I support moving this on to the ordinance stage. We can discuss more once we get to that ordinance stage, but I just want to clarify, this is just intended to become an ordinance. So I wholeheartedly support this, and thank you all very much.
Two concerns I have, all right? Let's say we get a call. Marshall gets a call. They got a swing set that's thirteen feet from their property line. We go measure it's not fifteen feet. What are we going to do? We going to make them move their swing set back two feet?
Or they're going to lie for a variance.
All right.
Or they're going to. How many other ordinances are just the exact same thing?
Secondly, what, what, what scares me here is, you know, I'm, I'm a conservative as I get.
Right.
All right, but cities have a responsibility to protect neighborhoods, and I keep hearing us talk about, and this isn't about swing sets. That, that, I keep hearing about, it's their private property. They can do what they want on that private property. No, they cannot.
Not necessarily that you live in a city. That's what an ordinance.
It's exactly right.
That's, you know, it's like when I upgrade my property, I gotta get a building permit. I gotta have them come after and inspect it. I got to get specs, then I gotta pay a fee. Then guess what? My property tax goes up because I'm upgrading my home. I don't like that. I don't agree with it. But I live in the city, and that's part of what I gotta do.
But that's where reasonable comes in.
Yeah.
So what's reasonable? And, and I don't think that, again, this is about swing sets. What we are discussing, and I, I mean, I'll, I'll even point of order it because what we are discussing is this ordinance, this ordinance stating swing sets and trampolines, that's what we're talking about right now. And all of the other what ifs aren't what we are discussing. They're not what's on the table right now. They're not the question that this body is, is asked to evaluate. And again, I go back to what is reasonable. You're right. I'm not saying that you can go out and shoot your firearm in your front yard because it's your front yard. Chief will be at your door because that's against the law. There's reasonable requests from private property owners, and there's unreasonable requests. And I think that the majority of this body probably sees, as PNC did, that the reasonable request is allowing front yards to have swing sets.
Well, there, I mean, the majority probably is going to. You're exactly right, but I'm still going to voice my opinion.
Call a question.
I want to make a remark first. When I first moved to St. Albans, I built a house, and my kids are all fifty years old. And I remember going out in the front yard, putting a swing set together, and my neighbors put a swing set together, and they're all in the front yards. And now we, that my kids have grown up, we're going through a generational change. Our neighborhoods are growing. Brian, Brian said there, we've probably gotten twenty-five families in the last year or two with kids below seven or eight years old, and they're all like that. So this, the, the people are moving in, and it has no, no, no effect on what they want as far as their property. They want to go somewhere where they can see the kids playing in the front yard, running the front yard, and it's safer. Because if they're playing in the front yard, there's more parents on the front porch is looking, thus makes it safer. You know, people walk their dogs up and down, you know, so like I said, it's, it may not, it's, whenever I grew, my kids grew up like that, and all grew up, and my neighborhood got old, and the people grew up. But now we're growing, and so it's, if you want to make it grow, it's a different generation. It's not safe like Brian said. You have to, you know, give the opportunity to watch your kids and play.
Right, there's always safety issues, but I choose to be able to see my kids.
All right, a bit of a comment question. We've got a motion and a second.
All right.
What was the motion exactly? To accept what they.
Yeah, except what, yeah.
To accept.
What planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Accept the motion?
Number, item one, that you can, you are permitted to have, well, to move it to ordinance, to make an ordinance that would allow the swing sets and trampolines to be in the front yards.
So that means you can.
You, you are allowed to have.
Yes will be it.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Bill Knight was the only one said nay.
And, and my reasoning being is that I don't have trouble with a swing set and whatever in the front yard. If they don't have the side yard or backyard, and that's, that's my reasoning.
When it gets to the ordinance committee, Bill, you need to bring it up.
Yeah, point of order, guys, if the motion's passed. Discussion done.
To recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to reject the zoning code change. Request, we request to Article 1333.08, recreational vehicles of residential districts.
Same move.
Discussion. I'm going to begin this. Go ahead, Bill. You can go first.
My question is, is what we, what are we going, what are we agreeing to?
We're agreeing to a four-foot set back instead of a three-foot set back. Or a fifteen-foot set back. All right.
Just rejecting it. We'll go back to the rest.
Well, that's what the rest of the ordinance states.
No.
We, we are not making any change according to what has been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Based on a lot of feedback from the community and the unanimous vote from the Planning and Zoning Commission due to it being overly restrictive.
Joey, sir. The existing, existing ordinance.
But we're not changing the rest of the ordinance. Yes, and that's what it is.
We're not changing a thing.
Well, you're going, you're going to have to.
How so?
Well.
There's nothing in here?
1333.08 says minimum set back of four feet.
Yes.
1333.03, recreational vehicles and trailers designed to be towed by another vehicle must be stored on a paved surface and parked behind the front building line. So we got a conflict within the ordinance.
That would be a separate. Today is for 1333.08.
Oh, wait, right, but I mean, if you're going to do that and allow it, now, one thing I want to bring up here. I've done, I've, I've, I've done my research, all right? The city of South Charleston does not allow any boat or RV parked in front of the building line. The city of Charleston does not allow any boat or RV parked in front of the ordinance or property, building line. City of Dunbar does not allow that. Now, there's a reason for that, but I just wanted to bring that up to let people know that, you know, and Hurricane doesn't, Nitro doesn't, but I just went from Charleston West. All right? So, you know, there, there, and in St. Albans, you couldn't do it for a long as time. But again, I'm, I'm fighting it uphill back. It's what I'm fighting, all right? I just think that we're eventually going to get to a point to where we're going to devalue our property values of our neighbors. And so, but that's just my opinion. If I move to Myrtle Beach and I'm thinking about buying a boat, I'm going to go and I'm going to check the codes and ordinances, and then I got a decision to make based on those codes and ordinances. My son owns a pontoon boat. Never once has it been up in the neighborhood. Never once. So anyway, all right, any other discussion? Scott, nice. No, unless somebody recognizes you.
I'll recognize.
Okay, these boats, the campers, RVs should not be in the front yard, period. I mean, you know, Dixie Cornell just bought a brick house up there on, by the Dairy Queen there behind Black Angus. She said, if I would have wanted to live in a damn trailer park, I would have bought a trailer park. And when you put them campers and boats and motorhomes in the front yard, you go down the alley, turn that, turn that to Dairy Queen. Okay, between Ninth Street and Tent, I think it's Ninth Street and N Street. You'll see this junky camper parked along the back fence. Who wants to, and if y'all change this, who's to say that junky camper ain't going to be in them people's front yard? I mean, you've got nice campers, and you've got junk out there that people sleep in because they came for to go nowhere. Or they don't want to get in an apartment that they can get in because of drugs, because of alcohol. They have to abide by the rules.
We're, we're not changing anything by what, that's, that's what you need to understand is what, what is being recommended by PNC is to leave it as it currently is.
It shouldn't be like that. That's what I'm trying to tell you. It should not be.
But, but in order to do that, again, I, I don't mean this as hateful, but that's not what we are discussing right now. We cannot by rule make that change today. It's not an agenda item. We can't make that change.
But really, but really, she's alluding to the other part of that. We meant the other part of that where you just got to be behind your property, your, your, like, behind your house.
1333.03.
And
Which, look.
But in order to change that, we have to do it.
Yes, but I'm not saying she's incorrect about the.
No, I'm not saying she's incorrect or correct or whatever. I'm just saying that it's not.
No, I understand.
Conversation. We have to discuss that at a different time because you said if we change that, we're, with this vote.
If these be changed, because I tell you what, I don't want no junky camper.
Okay, but that's, that's exactly what I'm saying is, but that's not what this debate, that's not what this discussion is right now. But this discussion is that PNC has recommended to leave as it is. To change it, we have to go through the process of changing it, but we can't do it.
Which is going back to PNC.
Right.
We don't. Back to the way it used to be years ago.
I, Jane Will said, one thing I do want to, one, one thing I do want to mention to anybody that has a camper trailer out there, if they vote with PNC not to change it, you got the four-foot set back. If you're blocking, if the tongue of your trailer is blocking the sidewalk, the city of St. Albans will come and make you back it up.
I'm going to correct that again. You say if we vote to change it, we are not voting to change.
I said vote not to change.
Right.
That's what I said.
Sorry.
All right. And there ain't going to be no parking on grass. And blocking view, neighbors leaving their driveway, and they can't see if cars are coming one way or the other because they got campers and boats that are blocking their view. We're going to come and tell them they're going to have to back it up.
How far do they have to back up?
Well, I mean, to where the view's not going to. I agree with you, Jake, but.
You very much.
I do.
You wouldn't want this junk camper up outside your house. You wouldn't want a piece of junk camper up outside your house, would you?
No, sir, I would.
Well, I, I agree also, I, I had a camper, I do not anymore, I had a camper, I didn't park it in my driveway, okay? And to me, it's, there is junky campers, there is very nice campers, I heard a lot of that last week. Doesn't really matter to me, if I'm your neighbor, and I'm sitting on my front porch, and you got a camper or boat sitting next to me, and I can't see down the windows, I don't like that, and I don't think, I, that's my, you know, be popular or not. I did park my camper when I had it, I, I got rid of it a few years ago, I did not park mine there purposely on account of respect for my two neighbors. That's me, and that's my opinion, I'm gonna have it, I don't think, nice or not, it should be in the front of your garden. But.
Wait a minute, somebody's gotta recognize him.
I recognize you, yeah.
Speaking as a real estate broker in this town for forty-seven years, it does hurt when those campers are parked out.
Took my recognition, buddy.
I'm not saying anything, I'm not telling you, I'm just telling you from a, a real estate broker's perspective that when you go to somebody's house, and I've had it happen before on McKinley Avenue and some of those avenues where you can't get back in very well, and like the mayor said, when you drive out, you can't even see if a car's coming in order to get out of those areas. And I have had, actually brought buyers to houses, and they've asked me the question, does that camper stay there all the time? And I say, well, it's been here ever since I have listed the house, well, we don't, we are moving on, and that's the truth. That's a fact, is what that is, is a fact. Because some of those areas down there, they don't have very long driveways, and if you got a twenty-foot camper, there's no way you're gonna get that thing in there, 'cause the setbacks on half of those street are either twenty or twenty-five foot setback. So there you are, you're right on the fence line, or you're hanging out in the, uh, road halfway, and we've all seen that, that's for sure.
I, well, I know for a fact I've been walking, and there's tons of, uh, RVs that are blocking the sidewalk. And you gotta walk around it. And i- is, is that ADA, uh, acceptable? No, it's not.
Most people that I find that have the, have campers, they all take them somewhere and rent a space for them, if I guess they can afford to do that, like down here in the valley, or some of them up here, uh, on the way out.
Change.
Yeah, different places.
I got a guy in my ward, he's got two of the campers you can sleep in, he's got a, some kind of car hauler, and then he's got another boat trailer, you know, now, and, and he's on a corner lot, too. Okay, so he doesn't even have a backyard. It's been like that since I've lived there, and, you know, building department's writing their letters and so on and so forth.
The building department is on that situation.
Right. I mean, you know, I mean, man, crazy.
It's tough, that's for sure, I mean, I've seen it out in River Lake and everywhere else, but they're not so bad in River Lake 'cause the driveways are a lot deeper on most of those, and they can just back them and blend right into the house, doesn't even affect the road. But on McKinley Avenue, some of those tiny, your lots that are forty-foot wide, and I've sold hundreds of them, there just aren't enough room with the setback to get anything, you know, a twenty-two-foot trailer on, just can't do it. But I'm not here to argue that case.
Neither are we, really, it's, again, that has to go back to P and Z.
Well, if you vote, if you vote for the P and Z recommendation, it stays at four foot, if you vote against it, then it goes to the fifteen-foot recommendation that was made.
Mayor, I don't get, I'm automatically go to that fifteen.
Okay, then automatically, okay, then we go back to the drawing table.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I've been trying to say.
All right, all right, any other comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, Neil.
My question is that, you know, we're gonna, you know, accept or not accept the four-foot or whatever it is. But my, my question is, is the building department, what's been being approved for, and, and, for cars and weapons? and, 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 if, 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 if it's, if it's not on a paved surface in front of the yard, in, in, in front of the, uh, house, uh, yeah, if it's in the grass or something, yeah, we're gonna enforce it. We enforce it now, Bill. With certain taxes?
No, we're actually on the one out there across the street from you.
Other than that, but I, I'm talking, anyway. I, I just wanted to ask a question to make sure that we're gonna enforce it and not have any problems with buildings up.
Yeah, it, we are gonna enforce it. It, it's gonna create a burden on the building department, but that's, I guess, what they get paid for.
No, not without.
A lot of places.
So. All right, anything else, Bill?
No, sure, that's my question.
All right, any other questions or concerns? If you vote yes, if you vote yes, you're voting to maintain the four-foot, uh, very, or setback from the front of the property line.
Right.
If you vote no, then we go back to the drawing board. All right? Uh, do we need a roll call vote?
Check the same.
Mayor, just, just, so, you said thirteen, whatever, conflicted with that, so we need to.
Well, yeah, but right now, we're just talking about the four-foot setback. We'll, we'll address that at, at, at a later date, yes.
The current ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm ready.
Current, current ordinance has conflict. But we're talking about the four-foot setback versus.
But no, go ahead, back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
Drawing board. Whether adopt what planning and zoning said, that's what it's about, whether.
Yeah, if you, yeah, that keeps the four-foot setback.
All right, you gonna call roll call? I'll call, I'll call roll call.
Roll call vote.
Cornell.
Uh, I'm vote that we accept planning and zoning, yes, I guess it'd be yes.
Jared.
Jared. Must've lost him.
Uh, Rucker.
In favor of planning and zoning's recommendation.
McKenny. He's not here. Roe.
Yes.
Knight.
Bill? You in favor of keeping the four-foot variance or not?
No.
Cluesterman?
Yes.
Hatlet?
Keeping it four-foot.
If I say no, that means we're gonna go back and reconvene the whole thing, no.
Well, it, it'd have to be on the agendas and back there.
Yeah.
Separate.
Right.
Cuts?
Aye.
Eads?
Aye.
Farrell?
I'm gonna accept the zoning changes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
It passes. All right. New business resolution adopting SAPD operational policy and procedures regarding sobriety checkpoints.
That, that can always come back, though, like, it can always.
We got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All, uh, questions or discussion?
I got a question. I, I've, I've never seen where, if a vehicle avoids a sobriety check, that that vehicle's not checked out, but I guess it's not probable cause enough to.
You're not allowed, the Supreme Court has ruled that it'll be a violation of their civil rights if you stop them just for avoiding a checkpoint. There has to be some kind of violation to stop them.
They have to be wiggling as they're leaving?
Well, it has to be some kind of, not necessarily, there has to be a criminal violation or violation to stop them.
If they get to the checkpoint, they're gonna get checked. But I'm gonna use a prime example. When they used to have checkpoints up there where A to Z outlets used to be, uh, people would know about that, they'd cross Sylvester Drive, go up the mountain, come out Hampshire Drive on Green Valley, that's how they got around it. Uh, that's what he's talking about.
And, and, uh, the devil's after what? Partially, Ethan, like, my mom lives there, near Value City, and we would have people that would wreck, because they would run from the cops after they go to pursue them once they turned around. And I'm not saying that's his specific example, but I think that there's just, we need to make sure that we are making the situation work.
That's, that's two different things. The checkpoints are required to have an alternate route, so you don't have to go through it. And that's why they set them up down there, 'cause they can. They have to do that.
Yeah, you have to get some mayleons.
What the CO4 talking about is, you skate over past there, and you're coming up to the checkpoint, and you do a U-turn on double yellow, that's an illegal activity. They can chase them down. But if they just pull off into a driveway to avoid it, and then come and do a legal turnaround, that's not illegal. That's what the chief is bringing out.
Okay, I didn't know that.
And, uh, also, we haven't had a checkpoint policy ever, and for us, we're gonna do a checkpoint in November, and for us to do that, we have to have a policy, and it has to be submitted to the Ohio County Prosecutors Office.
Where's that at?
Not that I ever used the Sylvester Drive route, but anyway. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution adopting S eight Fire Department Standard Operating Procedure four oh two Regarding Personnel Accountability System.
Second.
Questions or discussion? No questions, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution adopting, uh, St. Olmans Fire Department Standard Operating Procedure four ten Regarding Mutual Aid.
Move.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. This is just to continue what we already have, right?
Yeah, it's just updating, little housekeeping, changing some terminology, that kind of thing.
All right. Uh, Resolution Adopting St. Olmans Fire Department Standard Operating Procedures four forty Regarding Rope Rescue.
Same move.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Council conclusion.
Yes.
Chief, when is it rope and when is it line? 'Cause I'll tell you, if you went to Coast Guard and you say, take it, take it rope one, take it rope four, and then.
It's always rope in the fire service, and it's always line in the Coast Guard. It's the best answer I give. It's the same thing, but different terminology for different agents, it's not supposed to be, it's always rope.
And also, just, Mayor, so, anything, any changes in their SOP has to come to city council?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resignation of Ward One, Council McK, McKenny, effective October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Same move. Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Declare vacancy in Ward One, council nominate on November third and vote to fill it in November seventeenth meeting.
Same move.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
And, and just got one question.
Yes, sir.
So, the people that run for it, they do have to be nominated by someone on council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they could just reach out to council members. Some people that, you have to live in the ward. You have to be a ward member, you can reach out to any of the council members or city attorney, um, and, and let us know, and, and you can potentially be nominated.
No, the mayor can't, the mayor can't.
But, I mean, let, but.
Yeah, he can let one of the council.
Yeah, they can let, he can, sorry, mayor can't nominate somebody, but he can let us know, is what I mean. You can call the mayor's office.
Does the person nominating have to be here in person?
Say it again.
If somebody wants to nominate, do they need to be here in person?
You're not getting my vote if you're not here. I guess it's not required.
Uh, I think each, uh, I think each individual gets a little bit of time to.
At the next meeting, we'll take nominations. Now, if you're nominated and you're not here, I'm with Rucker. I would, then, you couldn't be bothered to be here for a nomination. I will need a mailing address. At the November seventeenth meeting, between the third meeting and that, I will send an invite letter. They can come to the seventeenth meeting, they can give like a five-minute presentation to council as to why they would feel, and the person will be voted on the seventeenth, sworn in and take their seat.
And once they're, give, give their speech and vote on, they could take their seats.
Yeah, that's what I said, he'll be sworn in and they'll take their seat.
At that meeting. At that meeting.
At that meeting.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, no, no suggested ordinances, ordinances, uh, treaty, cable franchise agreement.
Has the city attorney reviewed this and, uh, everything's legal?
Yes, sir, we, uh, we took a look at it, we made about three or four changes, they agreed to a little bit.
Yeah, they, they sent it to me, I sent it to the attorneys to evaluate, sent it back with changes, sent it back to Alex. And, uh, uh, so, everything's kosher, in the eyes of the, uh, attorney. And we've got representatives here, if you all have any questions.
So, you need a motion?
Well, need a motion, second, then if anybody has questions, we can go from there.
I'll make a motion, yeah.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Just question, clarification. As I read it, wanna make sure that what I read is I'm understanding correctly. It's just the ability to come in and compete. There's no cost to the city, there's no expense, there's no, we're not, we're not doing any infrastructure, we're not taking any, um, liability on anything, it's just the idea of competition with who's already there.
Yeah, you're allowing us to come into the area, build our infrastructure, and competition's great for the.
I'm gonna make a little bit of money off of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wanna make sure I read it correctly.
Any other questions or discussions? I wanna thank, uh, Alex Messia for his patience and coordination between myself and the attorneys on this matter. It's been a, a few months anyway, but we got it done and everything else, so, any other questions, Mayor?
I, I don't know how many times I've been asked in the last couple of months, how come they're not coming over here?
Well, they are.
I mean.
They have any other parties that need to be notified?
We have to notify suddenly. I guess, do I need to call them, write them a letter, or what?
Yes, letter.
Letter, okay.
They know. But you still have to.
You gotta write them that, thank God.
All right, any other?
Attorney's Board of Representatives, I'm not really sure how to write a petition.
I will prepare.
Thank you. Councilor Dell Davis?
Tim will prepare. How much will that cost?
That's, that's, that's covered under your retainer. Just making sure, darn it.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Ordinance is second reading, ordinance amending Article nine fifty-three point oh four of the codified ordinances of the city of St. Olmans, West Virginia, trash and garbage container specifications.
Same move. Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. An ordinance amending Article five forty-five point oh one of the codified ordinances of the city of St. Olmans, West Virginia, license required for carrying weapons, and I wanna, I wanna clarify, well, I need a motion.
Right, sorry.
Right, I wanna clarify something. We are not gonna require, we were just changing our ordinance to match the state ordinance.
Aye, Mayor.
You're welcome. I, I got so many messages on this, I said, redo it. Agenda, you know?
Learn the good laws.
Yeah, so, anyway, uh, any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Finance Committee report recommendation, recommendations, Councilman Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request a motion for approval of payment of current invoices in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries, letters and reports. Kevin?
I'll give you the part report, since Bill's not here this evening. Uh, you guys touched on it a little bit, it was a huge success at the, uh, Hunter Trail. All of our trail guides themselves would greatly appreciate. The one that y'all touched on a little bit, I think it was Councilman Rucker, was our Century Night. We had over a hundred kids that came to our Century Night, that's a huge success. Also, our Fall Festival, one of our biggest one-day events, we had over five hundred people that attended that as well. Upcoming events, we got a movie night this Friday night, that's gonna be up in City Park, up by the Nature Trail, it's gonna start at dark, one of our spooky, I think it's, uh, Freddy or, remember which one it was?
Halloween.
Halloween, that's right. And then Saturday, again, three to five, is our Trumper Tree down at Marinather. And we usually have anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred kids, and you as council members are more than welcome to come and give out candy that day as well.
When was that, Kevin?
Which one?
Saturday.
Saturday, the, the Trumper Tree is Saturday at Marinather, three to five.
And there's one at City National Bank between, at seven o'clock, down there on.
On Saturday night?
Saturday.
Okay.
And Grace Baptist, four to six o'clock on Saturday.
A lot of Trumper Trees.
So, do you go to each one, Mayor?
No. No, I'll go to the city one.
Wonder if you're gonna dress up?
I, I just can't eat that much sugar. All right, uh, any other letters or reports?
Crawl a wing.
Oh, Crawl a Wing is, uh, Saturday from seven to eleven up on Old Main, always a good time. Dress up, I dressed up, me and Jared dressed up last year as Big Enos and Little Enos. We got in the finals, but we didn't win. So, anyway, any other letters or reports?
Which one was wet?
You can guess that one. Uh, appointments, we have none announcements, EMS four, MUC board tomorrow night, October twenty-first at five-thirty PM in the MUC conference room. Finance Committee Monday, October twenty-seventh at four-thirty PM in the MUC conference room. City Council Monday, November third at six-thirty PM in the council chambers. Any other announcements? Yes?
Uh, we have our concerts Saturday, the P G starts at noon, 'cause I'll have hot ones and, uh, chips and drinks.
Noon to what?
Uh, I think it's like three or something, I don't know.
Is it, your flyer says nine to three?
Well, registration's nine to twelve. And then, uh, we're hosting a blood drive at the station, I think it's like our tenth or so. Uh, it's October twenty-seventh, and there are a couple of spots, open for the donate, I know Cluesterman's there every time, so, if anybody asks us to donate.
Chief, what was the location of that? That location?
That's at the police station.
Okay, then, did it move down?
No.
There's also a car show over here at the Louvre, the memorial for Bill Boe, uh, Pat's hus, uh, husband that passed away, and somebody else, so, we're hoping they intermix, they go to one, then go to the other, uh, that would be the best scenario, so, anyway.
I've got a cruise in for one day, though.
Yeah, yeah. That's not a bad idea. All right, now it's time for public forum, any resident wishing to address council, they step up to the podium, give your name, your address, you'll be limited to five minutes. Arm, you got anything, Knight? Not tonight.
Too much already.